It's my IC five nine, not five, it's six.
Five D nine. Is Robert going to be on Zoom?
He is not.
Not Zoom?
Yeah, he had work, yeah, he had work in it, so he's not here.
Can Zoom then?
Huh?
What time?
Yeah, he's, we'll beat him up.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
I'll hold him.
You hold him and I'll punch him, okay.
It's not like a team event, that's what I want with the plan. We're really on a team.
Team building.
Team building. There you go, jump in the pod.
Six o'clock? And I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for November, for November fifth at six o'clock. Sherry, would you please call the roll?
Vice Chair Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Chesley?
Here.
Commissioner Reisch Schmidt?
Here.
Commissioner Graham is absent and there's one vacancy.
Thank you. Jonathan, would you lead us in the pla-
Before we go to the pledge, we need to elect the chair.
Before we even do that, okay. It's not on here. Okay.
Item number one, before the pledge.
Turning to item number one.
Yes.
We have an open chair for the chair of the committee. And we need to have an election tonight to fill the chair first.
Correct.
So, I would entertain at this point any nominations for chair.
I'd nominate Judy.
I second that.
All right.
We call the vote, please, Sherry? Nominations are closed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Call the vote.
Commissioner Reisch Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Chesley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, now we can go back.
Well, hold on.
No?
There is still, okay, so now we have a chair, so now Judy will be sitting as-
Oh, that's right.
-chair. We still have the vice chair.
We need a-
Can I just make a suggestion with this? Because we don't have four tonight, if there's an interest in waiting for the fourth, to have that discussion, we can do that, or we can call to order tonight. I leave that to this body, to make that determination.
We should wait.
Sure.
I agree, I think we should wait and put that on next month.
So what you could do is then call for this item to be continued, date certain to the next available meeting.
That's what I'll do.
Okay. All right, but I need, I need someone to make the motion, I need a second.
Make a motion to move this item to the next meeting.
Next available meeting, yes.
Next available meeting.
I second.
Call the vote, please.
Could Reisch Schmidt?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Chesley?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, would you like to start with an introduction?
Oh, yes, before we go into the pledge, let's introduce our new planning commissioner. Katrina Reisch Schmidt comes to us, she's a resident, obviously, of the community and has, has lived here for, I'll let her fill in the blank on how long she's lived here, but what's more, even more interesting, and then I'll let her speak, because she can talk about herself more than I can, she used to work for the city and she also is a city planner, so we're bringing, she brings a lot of wealth of knowledge and background as it relates to zoning, zoning law, regulations. The city of Ojai, certainly. And we're certainly very much appreciative of her being here and look forward to her being on the commission moving forward.
Thank you.
So.
Well, thank you, I've been here in Ojai, I live downtown west, so just east of the Arbolata, I consider it very walkable, love Ojai, have been a planner on the private sector and public sector, so I've worked for private consulting firms, I've done private consulting myself, I've worked at the County of Santa Barbara, worked here at the City of Ojai for about nine years, from 2002 to 2011, and most recently worked at Ojai Valley School as their campus planner, helped the school rebuild after the Thomas fire and, which was a good regulatory effort, and that was fun, and now I am recently retired, so I thought I'd give back to the community and throw my hat in the ring for the planning commission, so here I am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina, we welcome you, your experience is going to be very beneficial to the commission and to the city, so, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Now, I think we can go back to the agenda and start with the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Public communications, this is a time that is set aside during the planning commission meeting for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of city business other than what is on the scheduled agenda. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for an emergency, no action can be taken at this time. So, are there any cards for people wanting to speak at this time? Okay. Well, somebody, I guess both of these cards, somebody who didn't sign it and Larry want to speak on the later?
I think Larry has both of these, and this is Mr. Myler.
Okay. Okay, those all appear to be items that are for our conditional use permit request for Joplin's.
One of those is for public comment, or comment for an item not on the agenda.
Okay, somebody has said they want to speak on item three. Okay, Larry, come on up. It is confusing.
Sorry, I just, Larry Stein Gold, City of Ojai, welcome to planning, the planning board, even though you've been before it a lot, congratulations, I've been coming a lot. One of the issues that I have found throughout planning and city is precedent versus slippery slope. And planning departments try to make things happen by getting around ordinances and what have you, not intentionally, but actually intentionally, to come before and look for a change of something. That's the precedent, when you change something. The slippery slope is the result of the precedent that's just happened. I implore you going forward that you actually, you, you look deeper into precedents and the slippery slope where things happen, such as, let's slow traffic down on Ojai Avenue, even though it's not part of your purview, traffic ends up going to Kuyama. Things happen by intent, or things happen because they are, don't care, or things happen because it's a predictable consequence and there's a risk involved in the intent, what have you, it's a big mix, so I implore you to actually think about all these things when you do, because these are the guardrails that protect our city, precedent and slippery slope, because you have a set of ordinances that when they come before you, you go, great, everything fits, you're blessed, go do your thing, or, I want a change, but that change affects everything, and it checks, changes the future of something. Somebody allows a setback of five feet, well, I want five feet, or I want a sign here, I want, and sign increased, I want all these things, and they change, and, but sometimes the change is not for good, well, it, we don't know that, some are, some aren't, but at the end of the day, I just want you to be cognizant of what precedent does to things.
Thank you, Larry.
Be consistent, which is not setting a precedent, unless you have to.
Thank you, Larry. Are there any people online, Sherry, wishing to speak?
No.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to the consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of October first, 2025. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Do we have a quorum, I have to abstain.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
Okay, so we will- Okay, so we can't accept the minutes at this meeting, we will do it at the next. Okay.
The next available meeting, yes.
The next available meeting. Okay, disclosure of site visits and expertise contacts for this item on the agenda this evening?
I mean, I have been to Joplin's but not related to this item since this item came up, I have no expertise contact.
I went out to the site during the day of yesterday and also went out to look at the lights at night, so I've been out on site twice.
Thank you. I have been on the site and drove the neighborhood, I have had no expertise contacts. Okay, moving on to the next item, the conditional use permit, CUP 25006, could we have the staff report on that?
Yes, thank you, Chair Murphy, sorry. So, this conditional use permit, 25006, is for Joplin's Restaurant at 715 East Ojai Avenue. And? There, I just. So, the request is for planning commission approval of a conditional use permit for the following elements on the existing outdoor patio, where outdoor dining was previously approved for this project. The request is for approval of outdoor live music, string lights, and a sun shade. This is the location up on your screen, it's at the corner of East Ojai Avenue and South Fulton Street, and this is the existing outdoor dining patio, and the performance proposed, performance area is at the northeast, or north, yes, northeast corner of the site, which is against the fence there in the picture that you see. So, again, the conditional use permit is a request to allow the string lights, a sun shade, and to host outdoor live music for Joplin's Restaurant. The live music is proposed for Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, and/or Sunday evenings from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The request doesn't include outdoor dining because the outdoor dining was approved in 1991, and once granted, a conditional use permit runs with the land as long as the terms and conditions are complied with. A minor conditional use permit and director's exemption, however, required for the outdoor smoker on the west side of the property was approved at a, recently, by the, by this planning commission. The current restaurateur is subject to the original conditions of approval, along with the conditions that will be approved or not this evening, and the previous resolution from that outdoor dining permit from 1991 is in your packet. The property adjacent to the east is developed with a non-conforming single-family residence, the residence is non-conforming because the property is owned C1 and residential uses are not permitted in the C1 zone. The applicant has been informed that the conditions of approval that are included in your packet with the draft resolution will include a requirement that the sound speakers be positioned such that they'll be directed away from the abutting residence that's to the east, and so the speakers will be facing west towards the restaurant, and a maximum of two speakers will bookend the performance area. The staff report and draft resolution include, and my presentation tonight, I'm using the word speakers versus amplifiers, and that's, I guess, really an, an oversight, because the amplifier is used for live music versus a speaker, but please know that that's what I'm talking about, okay, amplifier versus speaker. So, conditions of approval within the draft resolution include compliance with municipal codes, noise ordinance, and regulations, and pursuant to the code, a maximum of 65 decibels is permissible between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. And also regarding lighting, the general purpose of the lighting section of the code is to protect the quality of life and ability to view the night sky, and therefore, the project is conditioned to cover or cap or shade the individual string lights. Overall, the proposed lighting and music may provide an opportunity for additional vibrancy in this neighborhood, and the conditions, including placement of these speakers or, and/or amplifiers, and compliance with general code standards are intended, intended, excuse me, to create compatibility. There was a question before the meeting regarding previous conditional use permits for outdoor music, and so here, on the next couple slides, are the previous CUPs for outdoor music. One was for the Rancho Inn, that's located at 615 West Ojai Avenue. What I've listed here for this project, this property, as well as the Capri Hotel at 1180 East Ojai Avenue, are the conditions of approval that were specific to, to noise, and so what we have here are, they're both required to comply with the noise, noise standards that are in our code already, no amplified music for the weekly events, because these two sites had weekly events, monthly events, annual events, and they were allowed specific numbers of those events, so when it came to the weekly events, they were not allowed to have amplified music. Other events, like the annual and perhaps the monthly, may have been allowed to have amplified music. The, and actually, yes, the next, the next line actually says that, when there were to be amplified entertainment, the speakers for the events would be pointed away from the residences that were immediately surrounding the, the uses. And for both of these projects, there was an added condition that the amplified music shall not be allowed for events after 9:00 p.m. And just to remind you that the request for Joplin's is till 10:00. Let's see, Love Social, which is no longer there at 205 North Signal, was another one, and this one had different hours of operations and days that they were proposing, and therefore were, were included in the conditions of approval. They had music events on Wednesday through Saturday from 4:00 to 9:00, and Sundays from 2:00 to 6:00, and they were required to have a monitoring device that was, like, reviewed by the director, and this was kind of a different neighborhood, it was off of Ojai Avenue, little more embedded, it was a transitional zone, I believe that's, it's in the VMU. So, the, the monitoring device was alerting community development and also the property owner to any time that the noise elevated above the requirements, the standards in our code. They also were limited to the number of mics that were allowed during the amplified entertainment, and they also, they were required to come back after one year for a review, and, let's see, oops. So, th- those are the require, those were the, the general conditions for that project, and then for Joplin's, there are two conditions specific to noise, and again, the reason I'm talking about noise here is because there was a question by a commissioner prior to the meeting regarding the CUP and the noise conditions, or because of the amplified music, outdoor music. So, here we have live music limited to what the applicant was requesting, which is the Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday between 4:00 and 10:00. And there's something incorrect on this slide, it's not included in your, in your resolution, so I want to note it right now, that it says here that there's a noise monitoring device required, that, that's not true, that has not, that's not a, a condition. And the other condition is that the, the noise levels don't exceed the code standards. So, with that, staff is recommending approval subject to the resolution, and the planning commission has an opportunity, obviously, through their discussion and deliberation, to add, subtract, revise conditions of approval that are within your draft resolution, and the applicant is here this evening if you have questions of them.
Thank you, Maura.
You're welcome.
Do you have questions of staff?
I guess just a couple, and I just, I don't exactly know how important these are, but in some of the slides, we're talking about outdoor music, and this specifically is talking about live outdoor music, is that, I mean, does that encompass, like, is there, you know, is there a line there, or?
Well, the specific request is for live outdoor music, and so live outdoor music is, is written about, and it, in your, it, it's, it's part of the scope of work and it's in your packet. If the applicant wanted to have just piped music out on, to the outdoor patio, I think it's generally expected that, that that would be appropriate as long as it's not exceeding the noise standard.
Got it, yeah, okay. And then I guess that's the time differential between sort of where these approvals were and what's been, that's just what's being requested, is the 10:00 p.m. and-
Correct. Right, all of those conditions of approval, we look at every, every project, every case individually, depending on where it is, when it is, how it is, and so then they're conditioned individually. Just because some conditions were the same for one project as with another, it's not because we put, give the same conditions to everyone, it's because that they were appropriate for that case.
Thank you. Katrina, do you have any questions?
Yes, I just had a few questions about the string lights and the sun shade, they're obviously already out there prior to approval, so I'm just wondering when they went in.
Staff's not aware of when they were put in, however, because they, they weren't requested, but because they require a, approval by the planning commission, well, or director, if it wasn't coming before you, anyway, we included it here.
Okay, was it because of code enforcement, or they, the applicant just came in on their own?
Neither, we, we saw that they were there during this process and, and discussed it with them and had them put it on the plan.
I see. Okay, another question, just about the lights, in the application, it looks like the lights were, are just proposed for the patio, but the lights actually extend over the gabled roof in the front, and it goes on the west side of the building as well. Is that planned to be in the application, do we want to wrap, wrap that in, or is that something we want to require to take off the building?
I'd like to make us, I'd like to answer that question and then see if the director has anything to add, and, and that is that when we asked the applicant if they had lights, we didn't know that they were on the outside of the building, they, and we had them put on the plan, or we included on the plan, where, on the patio, and so now that we're aware of the fact that they're on the outside of the building, if it's appropriate to discuss that now, the only reason I'm thinking that it might not is because they, the scope and the staff report and the resolution specifically talk about the lighting being on the patio. Is it appropriate for the planning commission to add that lighting in since it's existing?
So, we, so we look at the application as it's presented, if they have added or omitted by, by their own misunderstanding in terms of what's to be proposed or what's existing there, I'd rather have the applicant speak to that specifically, that can always be added as a condition and then covered when it actually comes in for plan check, so.
Okay, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, I think this is a good time to have the applicant come forth.
Hi.
Hi.
I've never done this before, so I'm a little nervous.
So, it's okay, can you just state your name and then the address, it's probably, the address of the restaurant is appropriate.
I am Brittany Haskins-Nying, and the address is 715 East Ojai Avenue.
Great. So, you have an opportunity to add anything that, that I haven't said that you want to tell the planning commission, and then they'll have an opportunity to ask you questions.
Great, so I wrote a little thing that I'm gonna read, okay? Okay, so, good evening, everybody, my name's Brittany, and I am the co-owner of Joplin's in Ojai, thank you so much for your time and your consideration for the CUP, for live music, the lights, and the shade. I want to directly address the concerns raised by some residents regarding the noise and the precedence of, like, rock and roll in Ojai, we take these concerns very seriously, and I want to assure the committee and our neighbors that Joplin's is not proposing to open a concert venue for, like, heavy metal or anything, because that's, like, not what we're planning on doing. When we use terms like rock and roll or classic oldies but goodies, we're referring to the breadth of, like, rich musical history, I can't look up and down and read at the same time. The rich history of popular music that is foundational to our brand, ranging from soulful blues to innovative genre-defining sounds, this includes rhythms of Motown, the intimate storytelling of songwriters like Carole King, the powerful soul of Janis Joplin, our namesake, and other classic artists. Regardless of the specific style, though, the music we host has always chosen for its ability to enhance a great meal, maintain an ambient feel, and not dominate or disrupt the neighborhood. Our music will be strictly controlled and focused on small, mostly acoustic ensembles, and we are committed to ensuring it's, the volume is kept at a level that allows for normal conversation at the dining table. It's intended to be ambient, background music, adding to the intimate cultural experience of Ojai, not disruptive, high-decibel performances. The precedent we wish, the precedent we wish to set is one of responsible business investment and cultural enrichment. As our track record with the Duchess has shown, we are dedicated to bringing high-quality, destination-worthy concepts that draw significant business to Ojai. We aim to replicate the success of Joplin's, specifically driving positive economic activity to the east side of the Ojai Avenue. We are committed to ensuring this economic benefit comes hand in hand with being a model neighbor, and we're happy to incorporate any reasonable conditions that relate to sound monitoring or operating hours into our permit. We're asking for music until 10:00 p.m., but I want to be perfectly clear that our restaurant's standard closing time is 8:00 o'clock, so music will only be played later than 8:00 o'clock on infrequent planned special night, special event nights, and this will certainly not be the norm. This flexibility is requested solely for those occasional special events, allowing us to maintain our respectful relationship with the neighborhood. We're asking for the opportunity to provide, provide a beautiful, contained, and controlled cultural amenity that will draw residents and visitors alike, so, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Not, not immediately.
Not now?
Yeah.
Take your time.
I, maybe you can answer my question of, when was the sun shade installed and the lights, and did you want to incorporate the lights that are on the building into your application?
We, we actually installed those prior to opening, and just, we just didn't know at the time that we needed to get permitting for that, and you- And, you're actually bringing it to my attention that they're in the front. I guess I just never looked at the front at night, so I didn't even know that they were there. So, yeah, I mean, I mean, we're happy to make adjustments to that, for sure. It's not imperative that we have them.
How long have you been open?
We open on July 1st.
Any other questions at this time? No? Okay. Then we'll, oh, thank you. Don't go away. We will now open it to the public speaker cards, and I have Bill Miley.
Hello. I want to view, I view the city planners' comments about how this music request fits well into the framework described in the general plan land use element as an interpretation with a strong bias towards music as a wonderful, universally-accepted practice that everybody loves. I take a more neutral view of the general plan land use element. If I wrote the memo, I'd use the term "sound generation," in this case, music, and comment on the size of the patio, the distance to the next-door residence, the restaurant building wall on the west, and open to the Ojai Avenue in the north. I have been in this patio many times. It's small, and the size needs to be listed. Music can be good and enriching, as well as bad and disturbing. It all depends upon who is hearing it, and when and where, and what the volume and pitch is. Measurement of generated music, sound should be measured with a digital meter before such approval. The request should be pre-tested before approval. The Libby Bowl has a protocol for managing its sound generation. The protocol could be a much smaller version. Theirs is random and on occasion. Digital measurement of a maximum of 65 decibels at the property line is the general average maximum for businesses. The city's noise ordinance spells out decibels louder from that, shorter periods of minutes. The noise ordinance says residential property has a right to have only 55 decibels at their property line. This is a joint property fence. 65 on one, 55 on the other. Well, that's not going to work very well. You need a sound-absorbing structure in between. The name for a sound ordinance is "noise," noise usually being unwanted and unasked-for sound. My recommendation is not to permit amplified sound in this small area. Second, before approving a conditional use permit for music, do a pre-test. I have a brand-new digital decimator sound recorder with a computer that stores and prints it. It's available if the city needs it. Then, once it's shown the sound is under the decibel limits, there should be a test period during the coming year where decibel measurement equipment monitors the sound unannounced. Unwanted sound can become disrupting noise with innumerable consequences, in my opinion, and shown by research. One sentence more. How can anyone judge this impact on the surrounding business community, on any residence within sound range, without pre-testing the sound-noise transmission before giving a conditional use permit? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Are there any speakers online, Sheri?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other people in the audience who wish to speak? And, would you please fill out a card and come forward if so?
I think Larry has another card.
Oh, Larry, Larry has another card.
They're out here.
Okay. Should've known that. Okay. Larry, yes?
Hi, Larry Steigl. Well, congratulations for picking up the lights and that. And thank you for helping a, somebody who's opening a business try to get through the morass of rules and regulations. Hats off to you. However, okay, good try. I think it's important that the city helps people who want to start a business. How many other venues will have this opportunity to have music Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 4:00 to 10:00 PM throughout the city, once this has been approved? You gave a CUP to The Rancho because it was not fitting a box. Then you gave the CUP to The Capri because it didn't fit the box. And now you want to do this organization company and make it fit because they don't fit the box. So now the new box will have, oh, I can have music four times a week from 4:00 to 10:00 PM, and shielded lights. Okay, shielded. Are they shielded from the street? Is there a sound wall from the street? Are there automatic decibel meter readings? And it's, I'm looking forward to eating there. Okay? That's not the issue. To me, it's setting a precedent for changing things. For now, it's, the next place has open music for more hours. Now, if you say to them, "Look, how about what she said that," I'm sorry, "you can only have, you only want to have at certain events." Great. Four times a year? No problem. Three times a year? What are the events? Have them do the same thing as The Rancho, or cut it back some or a lot. But understand, this is the slippery slope. Okay? You saw, you see that, from no music to live music, to amplified music, to more live music, to more hours, longer hours, and it just keeps going. And that's why they're here. Not such a bad thing. However, the consequences could be unacceptable to the majority of people living in town. I like live music. I like amplified music. However, at some point, where does it stop? You know? Because it's inch by inch, what have you. And that's about the end of it. Okay? As far as I'm concerned. So, please be cognizant of where we're going on this, and what can happen.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Can I put an item number or a public comment?
Just bring it up. Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carl Walk. I am the neighbor at 723 East Ojai, and my family and I own that property, and then also 407B Bryant Circle, right in the middle there. So we have two commercial properties in the neighborhood, and the residence on the commercial property. And I just want to start by saying I'm all for this. Nobody mentioned the live music at the brewery, which nobody seems bothered by. So, there's already live music on the block, and it's not really an issue. I don't know what the permit issue or situation for them was, but it's not a problem at all. I can hear Libby Bowl at night, I can hear Firetrack 21 all night. The streetlight, sorry, I'm a little nervous. The streetlight on Ojai Avenue, right above the Berkshire Hathaway, is out. So actually, I really appreciate all their lights, because it's just pitch dark out there. And we've had some problems with people in front of the fence there. I won't get into that, but it's so dark out there. And I tried to talk to Caltrions, because I know the, it's a highway. But that light blinks on and off, it stays on for about two minutes, and then goes off for about a half hour. So I really appreciate their lights. Lights at the corner keep some of the riffraff out of there. And, yeah, just the, I'm that house in the picture in the back of the patio. So that's, that's me right next door, and I'm just totally in support of this. I know these guys, they're great. They close at eight anyway, so the 10:00 o'clock thing I don't think is going to be a big issue. And then, you know, the lights, I guess if they need valances on them, I had to do that too. I know the dark sky ordinance, but I don't even think they're really aiming up, because they're string lights, and they just really kind of aim down. So, I'm all for it. I'm the only neighbor. Berkshire Hathaway's closed from 4:00 to 10:00. Napa's closed at 5:00, I believe. There's the liquor store, which I'm sure isn't, well, I assume they won't have a problem. There's the empty lot directly across the street. And, there's really no neighbors that close, but you know, I know sound trapples through Ojai, so. But we, like I said, there's the brewery, there's Libby Bowl, there's the Firetracks, it's a commercial zone, the whole street's commercial. I think it's the perfect place for it. It's, you know, in some ways better than the Signal Street or Bryant Street. So, that's, that's my opinion. And I'm, I think the only one that would be really bothered by it. I absolutely will not be bothered by it, so.
Thank you, Carl. Leslie?
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Leslie Rule. I am a council member here in Ojai, but I am speaking for myself. Kind of a council member. It occurs to me that it might be helpful to explain just briefly how a conditional use permit works. So that we're not really talking about by right and then going into a slippery slope, but instead, we are looking at each specific incident, which I know that you mentioned, but there isn't a standard by which now we are slippery sloping away. A conditional use permit is something that is approached and given per permit and per example. So I think that that's also, could be a little bit of confusion. There is nothing that allows this by right, and now we're slipping a little bit this way. So I think that would be helpful to kind of understand. So if somebody wanted, it would be helpful for me even to understand, I have to say. So that's my only comment, is just a little bit of clarification on that would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie. Maura, would you care to comment on that?
Yes, I would. Thank you. So, we're not out of a box in this process. The municipal code has uses that are allowed by right, and then there are uses that are required to have a conditional use permit. And the code specifically says that if you're having an outdoor use, or uses have to be within doors. Outdoors require a conditional use permit. So, and any outdoor event requires a conditional use permit.
It's my understanding that the conditional use permit goes for, lives forever with that property? Is that just until the business changes? Or, if another restaurant came in, would they continue to have that CUP in place?
No, the use permit runs with the land. And as long as the use is not stopped or abandoned for a specific period of time. And, the use can change hands, and we go through a minor process of doing paperwork to, to, just to keep that on file. However, if the use stays the same, then the conditions, the CUP runs with the land.
So in other words, when, if and when we approve this, it would be a very permanent approval?
Well, subject to conditions. And if they don't, okay, so that's something else to add. Thank you. If the conditions aren't complied with, then there's a condition in this CUP as well as others that they can, they will be brought back to the planning commission, and then the planning commission has an opportunity to either amend or even revoke the conditional use permit. That's why it's a conditional use permit. So, it can be taken away if the conditions are not complied with.
Okay. Assuming that the conditions are complied with.
Right. Now, if the conditions are being complied with, however, it's not compatible with the neighborhood, and there are lots of complaints, but they are, then the planning commission has an opportunity to consider options to make it compatible with the neighborhood. That's what the conditions are for, to make it compatible.
But we would have to put that into, into a condition?
Yes.
Or, are we free to come back and revisit this on our own volition? We're not, I'm getting a big shake that I have no here.
Yeah, no, no. Well, it, not on your own volition, no. However, if there were complaints and it's not compat, well, that's not true. If it's complying with the conditional use permit.
The public hearing process is the opportunity for the, for the public to speak on a conditional use permit of this nature. The findings, which are a part of that, not slippery slope, but just the understanding of compatibility with the, with the neighborhood, and really kind of with the community context. It talks about general plan consistencies, it talks about use consistencies, it talks about surroundings, right? So all those different pieces come together for this conditional use permit. So it's not necessarily looking at it as, from a design standpoint, it's looking at it from a use compatibility. Are, is this use that's being proposed as a conditional use permit, being outdoors in this case, is it compatible with the surrounding area? And not only that, but the, the use itself, if there's conditions that are being identified as things to address those concerns, is that enough for a comfort level to meet all those specific findings? That's really what it boils down to. If you're asking the question on whether or not it can be brought back just because of complaints, no. However, if, when we go out, like, for instance, I know one of the members from the community had identified, "Look, if we go out and then we do a noise reading, just on a random night, and we find that they're, they're exceeding the standards," then yes. That, that gets into the realm of the potential of it coming back here. Obviously, we'll talk to the, to the applicant, to the owner of the property, to the owner of the business, in terms of making sure that they understand that they're out of compliance, and getting them back into compliance.
I understand that we used to operate on a complaint-driven business, and that that was in the process of being changed, that you were going to be taking a proactive approach to the complaint world. Has that happened?
So, you're talking about co-compliance. So co-compliance is historically, as far as I have been here, I think past, planners and directors here have had a reactive co-compliance versus a proactive. We are transitioning into a proactive, just took a proposal to council in terms of what that will look like, and we're doing a slow rollout. What that will also include is a staff person brought on, to CDD's staff, to help address that as well. We already have one co-compliance officer, but it's, we're looking to bring on a second.
And that co-compliance officer would then be tasked with taking a decibel meter out to the various places in town that have outdoor music, and occasionally checking them?
Well, to be fair, we can do that right now, in terms of compliance with the conditions. That's not a reactive, that's actually just a compliance check, which can be done at any point in time.
That sounds to me like you would go check when they open up with their music. Do you do spot checks after that?
There could be done. Here's, here's the interesting thing. There are times when we may very well go out, with or without a complaint, do a check, and then leave it alone. Obviously, if there's a violation, and it's a known violation that we end up finding, obviously, we would reach out to the applicant. The examples that Maura had alluded to with the PowerPoint presentation, those all came before this body and were carefully considered on the merits by which each of those businesses were looking to operate, right? Some of them took a very drastic approach because of the nature and the area by which these uses were looking to be located on the specific property. So obviously, it wasn't the same cup of tea that we were looking at with the same little bits and pieces all mixed in, right? So we were looking at unique situations, given the situation that was either surrounding or by which the use itself was a budding.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Is there anyone else, before I close the public communications, who would like to speak on this subject?
May I have something that I forgot to say? Oh, it's okay. I don't have to.
Okay. Thank you.
No, no? Okay.
No, no. Yes, come on up.
Oh, I just, in support of the small business, I just want to say that the east end of downtown is fairly difficult. The Old Hikane is empty, Lived Eats empty, Casa was empty for quite a while, and just, so supporting this, you know, supporting small businesses. And I think we need some, some life at the east end of town to support those small businesses.
Okay. Thank you, Carl.
Chair, if I could?
Yes.
If you are going to allow someone to speak a second time, you probably should open it up for everybody else.
Okay. It, that means that anybody can come up a second time. And Larry is going to want to do that.
Sorry. Too bad. Larry Steigl. Again, okay, while everybody mentioned the slippery slope, okay, as it's not, okay? But when you change anything, okay, it slides. Whether it goes down or goes up, okay, it changes, and it moves everything. It's not just a little thing, it could be a big thing. You're going from events that are specified on a weekend, you know, twenty, ten times a month, a year, versus four times from 4:00 to 10:00, okay? That's, it's still a change, right? to ten, okay? That's, it's still a change, right? Good, bad, or indifferent. And whether someone is in an M1 zone, has music, now you're in a commercial zone. That changes everything. And all I'm saying is be cognizant of where this could go. The other places, the Rancho and the Capri, all had a one-year review, if I remember correctly, followed the rules, and I believe the new buyer or new owner or tenant, because they weren't being sold, the properties, they were tenants, had to be reviewed and understood, and so that they understand the rules if somebody wants to buy the business. That was part of that. So if you're going to include some things, those things were already hashed out on the previous CUPs for the same sort of thing, all right? But here, it's, just be aware of where we can go with this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Anyone else? Okay. You need to fill out a card. I think I've just learned never to let anybody speak twice. Yeah, yeah, delay the pain.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Donna Abkar, and my fiance and I, we own a house at 929 Mountain View Avenue, just across the street from Topa Elementary. And as this gentleman said, we are thrilled by the energy and the life that Joplin's has brought to the east end of Ojai. And as he also said, we hear the Libby Bowl music, and it doesn't bother us at all. Otherwise, it's, you know, quiet neighborhood. Any life brought to, brought to our end of town is, is welcome, and we're just big fans of Joplin's. We're in there, you know, once a week, my fiance has a burger named after him, and we just really love the energy that has been brought to the east end of town, so.
Okay, thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Okay, now I will close the public comment section and turn it back to the commission for discussion. Would anyone like to lead it off?
Well, I think that it's been an interesting conversation about, you know, what a CUP is. I do think that was an important thing to just clarify for everyone here, and I do, you know, I think in the context of the idea of precedence or not precedence, I mean, that's the whole point of a CUP, is that you're not setting a precedent. You're looking at something specifically. So I guess then our job would just be to, if there's anything, any other types of elements that we feel are not being, you know, considered in the conditions that allow us to make sure that it's, you know, it's working. I mean, I, knowing the area, I live up the street as well, not within the sort of...
Sound.
Not within the, yeah, not within the three hundred feet. But I guess, you know, the one thing I was thinking about was the lights that you brought up, and, I mean, I walk or drive by that, you know, by Joplin's daily in the evenings as well, and I don't think I've ever felt that those lights are impacting the, like, the brightness of the environment around it. Otherwise, I would think maybe we want to think about, should they add like a cover, do they have to get different types, but it doesn't, it's not a very impactful, you know, light effect, right, you know, as you're kind of going by. So I don't know if that's, I mean, I'm open to ideas, but to me, it doesn't seem, yeah.
Well, I, I think the lights, they're, they have, they're conditioned right now in the staff report to be shielded. And you can, you can go to Home Depot and buy shields for string lights. So that's, that's an easy fix. And I think that those particular string lights don't meet the code unless they have the shields. So I, I would be amenable to having them keep those lights as long as they add shields to them.
Yeah, that makes sense. I guess we, we would need to add, are we thinking we would want to add, maybe within the diagram as well, like this other location of the lighting that you were discussing?
Yeah, so that, that would be a question for the applicant. If they want to keep those lights, I think they're fine. I just think they need to be wrapped into the project, otherwise taken down.
Okay. I would like to address the sound issue.
Sure.
I did drive the streets around this location, and there are a lot of residences, once you get one or two lots away from the building. And obviously, sound does travel that far. And music, while it sounds like you're going to be playing my kind of music, is still up to the listener. And I would not like to have somebody playing music four nights a week until 10 o'clock that was not music of my choice, actually any music at all until 10 o'clock at night. I would find that objectionable. So I would like the commission to discuss what kind of parameters or conditions we can put around this that might ease my concern about the number of times, the length of time, the frequency with which they propose to be able to have live music. Also, I'm not a musician of any kind. This is a small area, and you're going to have live musicians. Why do you need amplifiers at all? Yes, could you, could you address that? Thank you. Sure.
I have a few things that I want to, first, it wouldn't be three nights a week. It's just, it'd mainly be like Tuesdays for our Taco Tuesday. Again, and then we close at seven, so it would be over by seven o'clock. Like I said...
But then, that's what your request should be, because this sounds very expansive.
Sure.
If you were actually asking for music until seven on Tuesday and nine on Friday and Saturday or something, that's quite a different ask than what...
No, I hear what you're saying. I just wanted to, like, in case we have, like, like I said earlier, if we have like a special event where they, like, like a wedding party, they want to have like a band or whatever, you know, that's, I just wanted to keep it kind of flexible for those kinds of events. Like, we're, we're closed at eight o'clock at the latest every day. So, like I said, it's not, obviously, we're, we're planning on having music currently once a week, and that's on Tuesdays until seven o'clock. And then anything after that is just kind of like in case, or just like on a special night, because I can't tell you how many times people come in and say, oh, hey, you guys have live music here? Do you have a band? And I'm like, no, sorry, we don't, you know, and it's so ma, and then they leave. So it's kind of like, it's really kind of hurting our business to not have live music. It says rock and roll on our sign, you know? So, yes, it's like a rock and roll theme, but it would really add, you know, to our, it would add to our whole concept to have, you know, live music. And again, 10 o'clock is, they're going to be extremely rare, extremely rare, you know, so that. And then I also, if you don't mind, wanted to touch on the lights. The dark sky requirements are 3,000 Kelvin or less, and 60 lumens or less, and ours is actually 2,240 lumens. So it's actually below what the requirements are supposed to be. So there, I mean, we can put the things on them, but I don't, technically, I don't think it's necessary because we are below the requirements. But if you want us to take it off the front, that's totally fine. It's not a big deal. So.
Well, you can shield them.
Right, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's, so the code, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but all lights that are new, per this code from 2023, any new light that comes into the city has to be shielded and focused down. So...
Sure.
You know, to protect the dark sky, because it does, when, when the lights, the bulbs are, they radiate out and up. And so the shields, when you have them, it radiates down. And so we're trying to protect the dark sky and, and those, those, although the LEDs just look brighter than, you know, the, the wattage says. I'm, I'm all for, for you keeping the lights, but I do think they should, if you do keep them, they should be shielded because that, that's the ordinance. That's...
I mean, we do have the thing, the, the Scott shade on top that does kind of cover them anywhere.
Right, I'm, I'm actually not as worried about that area where you're, where the patio is than the, the ones that are on the building.
Okay, now I hear you.
If they're under the heat, is that within the ordinance?
No, you know, I'm going to jump in. So all the string lights are required to have a shield on them, and it's a condition of the approval, and, and it's, it's in our, it's in our municipal code. So all the string lights have to have a little cap, a little umbrella on them. And then all other lighting needs to be downlit. But the string lights are very specific to those little, those little hats.
Okay. One thing. Any, I think that was it, right?
I think we're good for it now.
Like I said, it's not, we're not going to have music four days a week. That's just completely unusual if we did. That's not the, it's just to keep it, kind of keep it flexible for when we do have music.
You're saying that to me, and I trust you completely, but I would be signing a document that allows you four nights a week until 10 o'clock. So that's a different thing. And so we have to come up with something that makes this a little tighter. You can always come back and get additional, if, if we tighten it, we could, you could always come back and try to increase it. Just saying.
Well, I guess I have a little different take.
Okay.
So my take is, we do have a noise ordinance, and it's, you know, well thought out, and the community put a lot of input into that noise ordinance, and I think we can stand by that ordinance. I think what they're asking is reasonable for the C1 zone for a restaurant that's been there. I think it's reasonable, and I did like Larry's Steingold suggestion for a one-year review. Come back any year, you know, we can review if there's been any noise complaints. We can review any meter readings we've gone out to, to the site to, you know, measure. But I think what you're asking for seems reasonable to me. And I think with having the CUP, we can add a condition for a one-year review, see how it's going, and then go from there.
Yeah, I like that idea. It is a pretty, I mean, and I also do like the idea of encouraging, as this has kind of been brought up by a few people, encouraging things to be happening a little more east and decentralizing some of the activity, you know, because there are great spaces and great opportunities out there that might be helped by, you know, by thinking about things in this way.
We have, we have music that has been, that goes on inside buildings. This being an outside request brings the subject here. The fact that it's nighttime music several days a week still bothers me.
Well, I, we're about two houses down from the Westridge, and they have like generators, you know, that are on the, pretty close to the property line. I'm sure those are louder than whatever this music is going to be at any time, and me, those are going on and off all night long. So I think it's a, that's where, for me, it's like a little tricky to make the distinction, whereas this is something that is, you know, feels like, and I guess we can figure out how we want to confirm that, but feels like it's, you know, yeah, within, within the confines of the code, also like has a limit, you know, as far as time is concerned. It's also on the road, so everything is kind of facing to the road and not to a property, the only property they have an endorsement from, which is nice. For sure, you can, you can hear everything, but like, the road is going to be louder, you know, most of the time as well.
I guess I would really like a test of what, 65 decibels or 55 decibels, if we go to the other side of the fence, sounds like. I think I've said that up here once before, and here we are again.
Well, the one-year review seems like a great idea, because that's a way to also, you know, let them come back, let the community come back, and let us know what, how it's gone.
Right. If, if the people on, on the streets nearby, I would like them to have the opportunity to weigh in after they've experienced this for a while.
Yeah.
So, that sounds good. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Well, then I would entertain a motion to... Second that motion.
Well, we need to, so we need to...
I need, yes, we need to have a motion to...
Was it a friendly?
Accept and spell out the conditions.
I see, I see. Okay, okay, okay. Make a motion to approve the recommendation with the, adding the condition of a review after one year. Well, that's already in there, right? Adding the shields is already in the, a condition of the CUP.
But adding the light strings.
Oh, oh, and adding the lights to the, that are outside of the area shown in the diagram.
Okay.
I'm not totally specifically sure where that is, but I think that's, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's like in the front. Does it wrap around to the side, too?
It's on the, yes, the north side and the west side.
Where the barbecue is? Okay. So adding those.
Is there a second?
I second.
Did you say they have one-year review?
They are bright.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
They're bright.
What's a phone?
Okay, anything else? If not, Sherry, can you call the role?
Ray Schmidt?
Yes.
Chesley?
Yes.
Murphy?
No. Okay. The item is approved, and we can go, congratulations, Joplin's, and I hope it all goes well for you. Okay, with that, we will be moving on to the informational items, future agenda items.
Future agenda items for Planning Commission tentative agendas, yes. So we have, if we're all turning to number four on the agenda here, it's November 19th, December 3rd are the two next regularly scheduled meetings that we're seeing here. At this point, we don't have, I mean, in the pending, you can see there are several items that are there that are, that are still in the, either in review or are, are considered incomplete. In review means that they've either resubmitted or are getting ready to resubmit that we're aware of, so it fits into that in-review mode. Incomplete means that we have provided those individuals, those business owners or those, those proposals with an incomplete letter identifying the things that need to be provided in order for us to do a full review and to deem it complete. And then pending is at the very bottom. That is a fun little Title X thing that we've been talking about for a number of, of years, just haven't pulled the trigger. I think once we are at full commission, I think, I think we can probably have that conversation reopen it. There's lots to discuss, and I think having a full commission is, is the appropriate time to do that. So for November 19th, there are no items that we're identifying, that staff's identifying, that are ready for the 19th, but we are seeing a couple items that we believe will be ready for the December 3rd meeting. So with that, if there's an item that you would like to have discussed on the 19th, we can still hold a planning commission meeting. If not, then we can cancel that and then get ready for the December 3rd meeting. But I would need consideration by this body in order to cancel that meeting specifically for the 19th. Otherwise, we'll hold it, and we'll, we'll find some items.
I'm okay to cancel it. I'm okay to cancel it.
Okay, I thi- I think we're in agreement that we should cancel that meeting.
Okay.
On the 19th.
Then you should be ready for the 3rd, because there will at least be two, potentially three items.
Okay. And if something comes up that is urgent about the 19th, we can always.
Here's the thing, if there are items that absolutely need to come forward before the 3rd, which I don't anticipate, but if there are, we can always hold a special meeting.
Okay, that's good. Okay, um, director's report.
Yeah, I was hoping that there was information or packet that had the director's exemption in terms of a memo. I'm not seeing the memo here. It was? Oh, it is? Okay, good. Ah, here we go, yes. Okay, I want to give you a little bit of background here, I know that we don't have all four here tonight, um, but there's a couple of things. One is, if you haven't reviewed this, I encourage you to. Um, this is just identifying that I need you to take a look at this, because there are times when there's going to be a director's exemption that's gonna come before this body. It also comes before city council. When we send out director's exemptions, which are basically, so there's design review permits which come before this body, and then there's something that is done at staff level, which is referred to as a director's exemption. Those are determinations that, per the code, uh, the director has made the determination that those items are not, um, worthy of coming before this body because they are minor in nature. Um, we have those every so often, I don't know, maybe 10 or 12 a year, maybe less, sometimes more. This, it depends on the season, uh, in terms of the items that are coming forward. Regardless, it's important and imperative that, um, you know that there's an opportunity for you to speak or to, to ask questions on that item. Don't think that just because you're getting an email, that, uh, you're just looking at it and there's nothing you can do. You have absolutely an opportunity to ask questions, just like you would here, except for that's a one-on-one conversation either with myself or with a specific planner that's working on that project, that's brought that project forward. So, I would encourage you, because I, I do believe there's one or two director's exemptions that are, that are getting ready to come forward, because I've looked at a couple of them, um, in terms of getting them ready. I encourage you, when those come forward again, that you, um, that you acknowledge them via email in terms of responding. Whether or not you have any issues, because I just want to make sure, one, that you're getting them, because I think last meeting, um, Chisholm was actually mentioning that he hadn't received them, and, and so we went and confirmed that he, we're sending him to the correct email. So I'm not sure if they were going to, into a spam, but he is getting, he will be getting the next one for sure. I think we've confirmed that, and we'll confirm that he receives it as well. I encourage each of you, when the next one comes forward, uh, to simply respond to the email and say, "Received," or "I have a question," or "No questions," right? Um, that way we, that way we know that there's that line of communication that's going both ways. What I hate to have happen is, months down the road, someone says, "What's going on over here?" Well, there was a director's exemption that was approved, you received an email. I never got that email. I don't want that conversation. I'd prefer us to, to have that open, open line of communication. Make sense?
Absolutely, it makes sense. We will, we will correct our behavior and acknowledge. Acknowledge receipt.
Oh, I don't wanna, I'm not, I'm not like trying to be a teacher here, but what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, there are, we have new commissioners, and this is a process that most commissioners are just not completely aware of. I mean, obviously, we do have a former, um, planner that used to work here, so, so.
No excuses for you.
For, for, for you, you specifically wrote these, so you know. But the, the interesting thing is, is like, for instance, with the director's exemptions, there was a, uh, an update to the memo that was done in 2019 that expanded on the process and provided additional clarification, which was somewhat unclear in terms of how they were being handled before. Obviously, for many years, they were being handled, um, but it was called to question and asked by staff to clarify that through a memo, which was done. So, we haven't really had any concerns with it, obviously, but every so often, like, I can tell you right now, when I first, when I first started here in 2019, the very first DE that I brought forward got a, got called up by this body.
When, when, how does that work? Does it, if we have a question, we just send you the question and you answer it? Or we request that it is brought to the commission as a whole, is that the?
That is an excellent question. So, there's two ways in which that happens. If you simply have a question or you want to understand the project more, that's a conversation. If you have a fundamental issue with the way in which this, the DE was handled or processed, it takes two members of the planning commission to call that item up. It's the same thing with city council, requires two members of city council. It can be either brought up by planning commission or brought up by city council. Independent.
I have a question. Um, my question relates to, when you have, um, different, multiple applications, maybe something that would fall into the director exemption realm and one that might, you know, ha- have a CUP or something like that, you always take it to the higher one to do everything all at once, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So let me give you an example. An example, a case in point would be if a conditional use permit was required, yet the level of, of, of the DRP is so minor that one would argue a DE. DE doesn't qualify, it would be a DRP. A minor conditional use permit would typically then follow with a director's exemption, simply because the, the minor conditional use permit by process is handled at staff level.
Okay. Um, I know that, um, one of my questions was related to process because of Jop, um, Joplin's. Um, I saw the cooker out there, and I knew it wasn't part of the 91 CUP. So I thought, why isn't the cooker in the CUP that we're looking at? And I was told that it was a director exemption before that. But it seems to me tho- those two should have come together, because it's one business moving in. Would you agree?
Yes.
Okay.
However, because it was uncertain as to whether or not they were gonna move forward the conditional use permit, they were more interested in getting the cooker up and running first, and then evaluating whether or not to even move forward the conditional use permit. So, the directory's exemption, I don't want to get too much into the weeds on some of this, because I'm really kind of talking only about the higher level of the director's exemption process. But because of the nature of that as a proposal, it could have come forward all at once. Um, I think what they were trying to understand is, maybe we just get this open and then just see what happens. And at that point, they were like, "Well, we've got the cooker, let's try for the CUP now." Is it, is it worth going through? Yeah, this is the process. So they're kind of kicking the tires at the same time. I mean, look, conditional use permits are discretionary, so simply applying for them doesn't guarantee approval. And certainly, there's a lot of discretion, as you've seen tonight, with something like this. We certainly take a lot of care and consideration into each one of these CUPs.
One more question. So, another process question. So, Joplin's had a 1991 CUP, just this, this is, I'm just using their name because they were here tonight, but it's not specifically about them.
Thank you.
Uh, but, uh, say a business has a CUP, and then they come in for subsequent, um, additions to their business. You could go back and revisit the CUP and amend the CUP. Look at the CUP, make sure all the conditions have been met, see if there's anything new, new code or, or ordinances that have been approved. And you could have amended that original CUP instead of doing subsequent CUPs. And I would recommend doing that in the future, because it's better for the city to look at this, in my opinion, you may not agree, but to look at the original CUP and make sure that it's current, up to date, and just amend that to add any new features the, the business wants to have.
That's, that's interesting. I mean, I, my question about that then is, is it, um, I mean, is that a, is that a requirement? And I, I mean, I, I guess I asked, I think about this in the sense of like, a, a non-conforming use that is existing, that, that is, existing is allowed to exist be, until you like make a change to it. Is there like a threshold, like, how does it kind of, you know, as you're saying, things were away in, in 91 that I'm sure are different now. So what would trigger to, like, if someone came forward? Would be a full expand, like, it's like, there's actually physical expansion? And that's kind of how I read some of this, like, if you're really like doing a more of a physical expansion to the space, or you wanted to enlarge the patio, then you reassess that CUP from like the ground up? If you're just adding pieces to it, it doesn't force
Yeah, it's.
A full assessment, or, I mean, you know, I think that's, it's a question similar to some other things I've had in the past.
To Commissioner Ray Schmidt's, um, point, question, but also kind of like a, a point to the same, to it. Spoken like a true planner. I mean, when you're evaluating these applications, you're also evaluating typically more than one path forward, depending on what the proposal is. I mean, on a regular basis, DE or CUP or any of the, any of the sort, I mean, we've got like 25 different applications, um, by which people can move forward with, with, um, various uses and, and process. So it's, it's an evaluation at that point. To, to the point of an existing use, in this case, a CUP, or even an existing DE, uh, in the case of what we're talking about here tonight, it could have gone either way, if I'm, if I'm being fair. It could have gone either way. Um, here, it kind of made more sense to identify that those existing conditions from 91, and then what we're looking at here for 2025. In 91, there wasn't the code update that took place in, the major code update that was, that took place in 2004. So, 91, obviously, the codes were different than what we're looking at from 20, uh, 2004 forward. There's been some revisions that were done through the errata in 2022, 2023. Um, and now we're bringing all this back online moving forward. So it's basically resetting, but also reevaluating the use as a whole. Given the, because rarely do I see standards diminish, I only see standards pile on top of each other, right? That's just what we see, so.
So there isn't really a threshold, it's, it's, it's discretionary, in a way.
It's a, it's an evaluation. It's an evaluation and conversation typically
Yeah.
with these applicants. We identify to them what their process is and what, and what the different, um, like, for instance, with the DE, as we begin to, to learn about what the proposal is or isn't, that's when we begin to navigate whether it fits into the mold of a, of a director's exemption or a full review by this body. I mean, even as a DE, as it, as it states in here, you still have the ability and, and certainly the right, and we were, um, expecting you to review it, uh, and then provide either comment saying thumbs up, or hey, I've got some questions, can you, can we meet to talk about this? Or, this is not in the, in the realm of a DE for the following reasons. All those are on the table.
Do you always, um, when you, when a project comes in the door and it has a history, do you always go back to the original CUP?
If there is an original CUP, yes. There's only a, a couple handfuls of CUPs that are throughout the city.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, um, is that it?
To be continued, because I do want to, I want the full commission to be here for, for the, for the conversation. So you'll probably hear me do this again a couple different times, because I, I don't think it's one of those things where it's like, oh, I talked about it once, we're all done, yay. I think it's gonna need to be a couple of, of conversations and then, well, navigate it. I'm sorry, it's just, it's the nature by which I operate, I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's good.
We have next on our agenda, the city council liaison, and we have Leslie here instead of Rachel, or something like that.
Yes, hi, thank you, Commissioner, uh, Leslie Ruhl, as your stand-in, uh, commission liaison. Um, Councilmember Lang is at a transportation conference in, uh, Long Beach, so I am, uh, just
Standing in, thank you.
Standing in for her. Um, the only real thing I have that's of true and deep interest to you folks is that we have confirmed and hired a new attorney, uh, a new law firm, um, Alashir and, and Weiner, and, um, you will have a, uh, very experienced new attorney, uh, coming in. All of the attorneys, I think you know Sunny Saldini, um, she has worked quite a bit with Lucas and on some of our special projects. She wa- is the managing director of the firm, and she will be guiding, uh, basically all three of the attorneys that will be, uh, working with us. So, um, I just wanted to kind of let you know that, we're very, very excited about that. Uh, your particular, um, attorney that will be sitting here for planning is Carrie Raven, and, um, there's a press release that's gone out, we can also send you a link to her bio. Um, one thing I found very, very helpful, uh, previously, think about the kinds of legal things that you might want to have a discussion on or a presentation. They're very, very experienced in infrastructure, planning, housing, land use, it's really one of their specialties. Um, and I've seen presentations before by the other firms, um, when things get very technical, to have the attorney not only present to the, to the commission, but also, uh, to the public. It becomes very, very helpful, a lot of the housing laws. Um, for instance, over the last three or four years, I think you remember when we had that presentation and how helpful it really was. So I would, I would, um, I would use this as, as an opportunity in the transition to actually think about what you might want to learn more about, um, or even ask them what they see bubbling up. Uh, so that's the, I think the, really the, um, major, uh, thing I wanted to, um, communicate, and certainly ask you if you have any questions for the council, um, that you would like me to speak to, which I, of course, would be happy to do. All good?
Okay, we're all good. Thank you, thank you for the update on, on, uh, our new attorneys.
How do we ask for these?
I do appreciate the idea of having a, a presentation, because this is a very young and new.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Young in terms of years, sir.
Yeah, youthful.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think that would be great. I think that, you know, taking this as a edu-, as an opportunity for education, I know I would attend, um, because I just, I think it's fascinating, and I think, um, you know, other council members, likewise, the public would certainly be willing to attend. Is, as far as getting the information, I'm sure that, um, Mr. Seabert can, can send you, uh, links to their bios and the press release. We, it just went out today, so that you get a sense of who will be sitting in with you as we transition, which we'll be looking to do, uh, in the first, first week of December.
Good.
I was also gonna ask though, if we wanted to, like, set up a housing presentation, for example? What's the, we just ask you, Lucas?
Can I, can I just, you beat me to the punch, I was gonna say something about that.
Sorry.
Uh, we actually just, I just, I just made staff sit through a presentation, it was about two and a half, almost three hours long. I do know there, that there are new housing laws that are coming online January 1st. So whatever presentation we just got is gonna need a refresher. Uh, I think there's an exceptional opportunity for that to be brought before this body. Um, a lot of it was reviewed for me, um, some of it was new and a little bit eye-opening in terms of, um, some of the things coming down the pipeline, which are a little, a little discouraging. But, still, it is a part of our process, and I, I think it's important for you to hear some of this, so when there are projects coming forward, you're well informed. So, I think there's definitely a lot to, to be gained from that, for sure.
Agreed, and, you know, a, a joint, I mean, I want to come, so, so, put me on the guest list. Okay, thank you.
You're invited.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay, anything else? In that case, meeting is adjourned at 7:28.